August 26, 2020. City Council chambers will be open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at the meeting. Citizens may also submit our comments in writing to cityclerk@cityofbradenton.com or voicemail by calling 941-932-9437. And all those comments must be received by the Tuesday prior to the meeting. And always, we begin our deliberations with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be brought to us this morning. My counsel, one bird. Please stand.
May we bow our heads. Most gracious and everlasting Father, we come to you this morning first giving thanks. Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here this morning in the decision-making process. Father, we'd like to ask your blessings upon all of us, both individually and collectively. And Father, we'd like to ask your blessings upon those decisions we make here today, that they may be for the betterment of our community and our city. These are many other blessings we're asking your name. Amen.
Amen. Counselwoman Barnaby, would you lead the pledge, since we just had a historic moment for women this morning?
I would be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Follow me into order. Disposal.
Good morning, everyone. We have no proclamations this morning, and we have no presentations scheduled.
All right. Citizen comments will be accepted at this time on any consent agenda item or non-agenda item. Comments will be accepted on public hearing items at the appropriate time. Two people signed up to speak. Rodney Jones.
Good morning, counsel. Rodney Jones here, 213 16th Avenue West, Bradenton. Just a couple of things this morning, real short. I had put in some requests to the police department, primarily on Ben Piper. I had asked the mayor, and he didn't seem to know whether he worked here or not. And I've put in some requests, and I'm having a difficult time getting those responded to. So I'll probably, as my Ward Five councilman, I'll probably send the request to Harold Byrd and see if he can follow up on it for me. But it's kind of disgusting when you can't find out whether somebody works for the police department or not, and you've been waiting for quite some time and still don't have an answer. Also, I'm not that deep in it. I usually don't comment on things that I haven't really studied, but I hear there's some conversation about contracts for employees. Bad idea, if that is the case. They should have to earn their way every day, just like everyone else in the world does. I know I'm from a corporate environment, and if you don't perform, you lose your job, period. And I think we need more of that. You know, we see a lot of that in the school district where people are not performing and still have their jobs. And we want better. And you know, I've been down here ranting and raving a lot. I'm a lifelong resident here. I'm four generations deep here in Manatee County, so I don't come shorthanded or not knowing. This is home to me. It's home to my family. It's home to my children, and now it's home to my grandchildren. And I just simply want better. I don't care whether you're Republican, Democrat. I don't care whether you're hard right or hard left. I just want what's good for the people. And so I thank y'all for the time.
Mr. Jones? You said contracts for employees. You talking about like union members?
Yeah, I don't know. It was just kind of brought to me, and I just think it's a bad idea, because I see it real bad at the school district where people, there's like zero accountability. People are allowed to stay in positions for a long time and not perform. It increases liability of the municipality. It creates liability issues for the entity. And so that's just something I heard. Like I said, I don't have a lot of information, so I don't want to dig into something that I'm really not versed on, but I just did want to drop that tidbit if it is circling around. Think it's a terrible idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we have unions, and we do, we do union contracts.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. That's why I didn't dig into it too hard. I don't want to start something and don't know what I'm talking about. Just, just mention it. Appreciate the follow-up. Thanks, Matt.
Peter.
All right, back at it again. 1915 11th Avenue East, Keenan, Wooton, Ward Five here, kind of back at the Wootons' corner. Talked to the county. We kind of just do things in our neighborhood. Don't wait around for anyone. With 27th Street there, that was a big blow up about two meetings ago. They, they will be doing some work there on that road. I talked to some county officials. They have some plans for that. I don't know if you all did or not, or anyone did, but I did. So we'll be looking for those plans of that, on that highway there, on that road, and see what's going on. So I know they, they did say across from Glen Creek there, I think it's south, southwest, that little corner there by Mixon, that's the city. So they, you know, we don't want three or 400 apartments there. So we, you can already start getting that in your head now. But we'll see what that is or what's that going to be in the future. But I can tell you now, we don't want that until that, that road is cleaned up or at least made better for the residents that stay there. Stay, stay in that area, that surrounding area that feeds right into the city. So we're going to work on that. Still 19th Street Court East. I tried to turn in today from that four-way stop, and people just doing what they want to do. I'm going to keep fighting this to the end. Like I said last time, I might not win it, but it might be another generation that wins that battle. But at least I started it. And, but it's not going away. It's not going away. We're gonna, we're gonna start mobilizing and getting a little bit more organized over there, because that's not fair. Schools started. There's buses everywhere. Like I told you all, Ward Five is the most bust-out neighborhood in this district. I don't know if you know that. And they bust us out because they need the minority students at the other schools. And I get that, you know. That goes all the way back to Brown versus Board. But, but then when they come back and then the residents that stay there, there's buses everywhere. People park where they want. Bradenhausen Authority CEO, he's not held accountable. So we're just kind of getting sick of this. And you know, you just keep taking it and taking it to, you just maybe give up, but I'm not going to give up on that. It's bad when you try to turn in on that four-way stop, and it's another car right there, and then you can't, and the road is all jammed up. Public Works has heard about it, but I haven't heard anything from them. I've heard anything from anybody. So we're going to keep beating this down. If you want to take a field trip over there, a couple of you have taken a field trip over there, and nothing has happened again. You know, I see the Bradenhausen Authority CEO sninning and grinning around the neighborhood, and he's not held accountable with that. So we'll just see what's going on, but just give you an update on that. So if you have any questions, you know where I'm at. But we're going to fight that to the end. And I just want safety in our, our community, and that, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address the council on any agenda or non-agenda item? Anyone who wishes to speak to council? Anyone? Hearing none? Disposal.
As for the record, we did not receive any comments by voicemail or email this week. Next, we have the consent agenda. We're asking for approval of items A through I.
Carol, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. The vote's five to zero. Disposal.
Under business advertising petitions, hearings, and communications, we have Attorney Rudisil with the second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 3070. An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 62, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances, to provide closing hours for the public day dock located at Riverwalk Park, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for effective date. And again, today is a public hearing, and we will be asking for a decision today.
Scott, do you have anything to say on that?
Just very briefly. We, the ordinance as proposed would add one line to the code to create hours for the day dock. Hours are from, it's closed from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and boat mooring is prohibited during those times, and that's really the, the extent of the ordinance. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Scott? To open a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone who speaks in favor? Anyone in favor of this ordinance? Any opposition to this ordinance? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none? Close to public hearing. Carol, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Ordinance 3070.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve Ordinance 3070. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question.
Patrick?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor. I've noticed that we've, we've been down there before. There seems to be, is this because there, there has been many times like a dock, a boat tied up there? It just seems to be stored there? Make that not okay?
I think that's right. It was mainly boats being left overnight and taking up spaces there. I think that was the impetus for the ordinance.
The boat that I've been looking at's been, it seems to be there permanently.
This ordinance will change that.
The tent was obviously to be a day dock by the description.
Yeah.
To allow people to come and go on a daily basis, but not for overnight.
Okay.
Any other discussion? We have a motion of second to approve Ordinance 3070. Let's vote. Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Ordinance 3070 is approved. The vote is five to zero. Disposal.
Next, we have the first reading of Ordinance 3071. An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, requiring business establishments to post signage regarding face coverings as more fully specified herein, repealing and replacing emergency ordinance 3067, providing for severability, providing for reading by title only, and providing for an effective date. Again, this is a first reading, so there's no vote required at this time. We just would like you to set the second reading and public hearing for September 9th.
Okay. Carol, entertain a motion.
Move to approve Ordinance 3071, setting second hearing September 9th.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the first reading, set the public hearing on September 9th. Any discussion? Hearing none? Let's vote. Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Ordinance 3071 is approved. The vote's five to zero. Second reading of public hearing will be September the 9th. Disposal.
There's no new business today, but we do have unfinished business from Attorney Rudisil. We have the reconsideration of Resolution 2060, of which I'll read into the record. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton, Florida, rejecting the recommendation of the special magistrate in the matter of Promenade Associates LP, petition for relief pursuant to Section 70.51 Florida statutes, issuing a written decision describing uses available to the subject property and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, mayor and council. This is the reconsideration of the recommendation of the special magistrate in the Promenade Associates fluidra matter. This was originally heard by the council on July 8th, and you'll see in the agenda packet, the entire packet from that date with the options that were presented to the council at that time. Essentially, you have a recommendation from the magistrate which could be accepted. There is an alternative recommendation from staff with stipulations if the council is inclined to approve the petition. And then the third option, of course, is to, is to reject the magistrate's recommendation, which was the original action that the council took in this matter. The petitioner was not present when the council discussed this on July 8th, and the petitioner then appeared and requested reconsideration, and that's what brings us back to today. I believe the petitioner is here if the council would like to hear from them.
Is he here? I don't think, I don't think so.
I don't.
Well, maybe the petitioner is not here.
I didn't see them.
Okay. In that case, I'll turn it over to the council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I went out again and did some measuring and relooked the entire situation over. Plus, I went and looked at Cortez Commons, who has an exit only on the eastern side of their shopping center. As you, if you're coming out of Walmart and you turn left, and very quickly you come to Cortez Commons, and you'll see it says exit only. You can't enter there. You have to go farther to enter, and that, that works well. So I asked our Public Works Director to, this little picture that you have in front of you. My, my request to, to Benerson, and quite obviously, it's, it's mine. I wasn't speaking for, for anybody else. That would provide me enough confidence to, to vote for what they want to do if they do it this way. And if you'll see that I, that I, I feel like if they made the entrance and exit that is on the western part of the, of their property on Manatee Avenue, which would be where the log jam would in fact happen too often, if, if they would, would reduce that with a curb cut and make it an exit only. So to get to that shopping center, they would safely drive down to 67th Street, which is a traffic light. There is a D cell lane that they could be in. They could turn right and enter in to go to that coffee shop. Also, to block the, the little cross traffic that they had, that they could go into the storage area, which there's no need in people going back and forth through that storage area. So I, I would like to present that to the council, that if, if in fact it would require, Scott, that I, that I would make a motion for us to submit this to Benerson, for them to look at and see if they would like to get approval based on this fact, if the council feels like this is a good alternative.
Ms. Barnaby.
Mr. Gallo, you're asking us to give approval condition upon them following this, this plan that we're seeing here? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, and Mr. Rudisil, I mean, I, is there any other changes that we're requiring them to do? Other than the last time I looked at this, I was trying to, trying to go back and forth and see exactly what's different.
Right. So staff had a list of about eight stipulations that they were reconc.
All in the back.
What's that?
All in the back in the alley.
I think some of them were related to this issue as well. So if the council were inclined to adopt this modification, then we'd want to look at those stipulations, and we might modify them some. For example, there's a stipulation that they'd be required to ensure that cars don't back up onto Manatee Avenue. And obviously, if, if this were adopted, I don't think that would be necessary. So.
With this gate and fire marshal, I'm looking at you. Is that something that will be put in where should our firefighters need to? They, is it like a keyed thing where they will have the ability to, to get through there? Should a fire truck need to, but regular traffic is excluded from coming across? Is that what we're looking at here? I'm getting an affirmative, that's correct, because he's not walking forward to talk to me. I just, just saying. Trying to help you get your steps in.
Yes, that is true. It'd be electronic gate.
It would be electronic gate. Can you just speak to that a little bit so that we have it on the record?
Yes, it's a electronic gate that is controlled by a remote control that all of our trucks have inside it, can open and close it.
Okay.
You're talking about the gate going to the storage?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have this.
That's the gate that's marked in red on your drawing.
We have this in other areas of the city, and it works well.
Yes, ma'am.
You're comfortable with it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comment? From council? Or question?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Gallo, this is a pretty good plan. I, I think that's a, I, I know that we, we had, we had issues with this, and then we went to mediation, and the... And, well, and then mediation didn't really, didn't really go in our favor, so we needed to do with some kind of compromise. I think this is a pretty, pretty good, pretty good idea.
Thank you. Went back to my old fire marshal days of thinking.
We have someone here who can look at your plan, Mr. Gallo, and make, maybe make a comment. What we have on the thing is Mr. Gallo's plan.
Yes, sir.
To put the gate where the red marking is.
Yes.
That closes off that, except for fire service. And then an exit only to the right, going out to Manatee Avenue.
So the, the, I apologize, I was late, Commissioner. There was a car accident right in front of the commissioner, the county commission building, and I was right behind. The exit-only plan, you know, we, we couldn't agree to. I understand that there is concern about cars eastbound on Manatee Ave, turning right into that driveway and backing up. You know, we did agree to the proposed condition that that area not be blocked, and we have included that in our lease with our proposed tenant, that we could terminate them should it happen. So we, we hope that that's an adequate safeguard, but we're not prepared to give up a right-in at that location.
And you are?
I'm Todd Mathis. Apologies for the record from Benerson Development.
Thank you.
You're not prepared to do what, sir?
To eliminate a right-in. Currently, that driveway is a right-in, right-out. We are prepared to gate the driveway from the storage, but to eliminate that right-in, we're not prepared to do that, sir.
And you have talked with the tenant? And what, what have you said to the tenant?
We have included in our, in our lease with our tenant, a right to terminate their lease and stop their operation of that drive-through in the event that that drive is ever blocked by their drive-through traffic.
And you're going to have somebody sitting out there every day because that's how you're going to do it?
That, that's exactly why we included it in our lease, Councilwoman, is so that, you know, obviously, the tenant is there. They have a manager there. They're responsible for ensuring compliance. In the event there is non-compliance, both the city would have a right of enforcement action against us as a property owner. We would have the right to terminate that drive-through immediately. So we're prepared to do that, should it happen. We don't believe it will, but should it happen, we're prepared to do that.
So if you were to receive a letter from the city saying, hey, traffic was backed up, then you'd terminate? I mean, how's that work?
That, that, we would terminate. We also understand that would be a violation of a, of any condition of approval, and so our approval would be essentially subject to enforcement.
I'm just worried that we don't get into an argument over who, who, who decides on what level of traffic is terminated as a backup, and then we're into a legal discussion of what's backup mean and how many cars and...
Understood, sir. And I don't think there's really a question there. If we, if we have a queue that stacks past that location, we've violated that condition. Our tenant has violated that condition. We're going to terminate the drive-through. The last thing we want is for our driveway or our shopping center for the rest of our tenants over, you know, 1,000 feet or so to be problematic. We certainly don't.
Okay.
I honestly, and I can't speak for my other council colleagues here, I would never do that. I thought this was a good compromise, and I'm prepared to support this compromise. Just saying.
I agree.
Mr.
I think Mr. Byrd's trying to get to...
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I guess this is more towards legal, because we, we have a situation where we're offering a compromise in addition to the stipulations that staff made. How would we proceed if we were to put on the table this particular addition to the staff stipulations?
Well, the, the council has the ability to adopt whichever approach it wishes. If the petitioner, so for example, if the council were to adopt the modified recommendation with the addition that Councilman Gallo has presented today, the council can do that, but the petitioner has the right to reject it. So in that scenario, then, there would be no, the petition would not move forward. That would be the end of it. I think they're just giving you advance notice that if this were the approach taken by the council, that wouldn't be something that they would accept.
I guess my reason for asking that question is, is that this is seen as a compromise or something that if we went forward with it, the council would be saying, okay, we would allow this. And if it was not accepted, I understand that it couldn't move forward. But in case of any further litigation or anything, it could be presented in a way that we did offer a way for this to happen and a good compromise. And that's why I wanted to present the question in that way. No other questions?
Just in terms of conversation, there are a lot of other tenants in this shopping center in addition to the coffee piece. And people coming down here and want to turn right and go into there. Going down the lights, not a horrible hardship, but it is a change that may impact the businesses, and I'm sure that's why the, these guys are saying we don't want to lose that right turn in, so.
Yeah, I, and, and to just elaborate on that point, you know, the, the PM, fresh market grocery store traffic going home, you know, that traffic that turns right into that driveway today versus right at the light, you know, if you push all of that traffic to the signal, it'll certainly change circumstances. We're just not prepared to make that compromise, especially... We're just not prepared to make that compromise, especially since, again, we are fully ready to terminate the drive through. It's over in the event that queues up past the location. It's an enforceable condition, it's a stipulation, and it's a a condition that would continue to allow that right in.
Again, I'm not not to belabor and sorry, Mr. Mayor, not to belabor the point, but running a small business is like cat herding and trying to to be a manager of that, make sure that that's operating smoothly, walking outside, making sure and what what does he do when it queues up back there? Does he tell them to come around or I mean, I I just.
Councilwoman, we have a lot of experience working with our tenants to ensure that traffic is maintained and there's MOT in place during holidays and other times. We have a lot of managers who do that across the country right now. Our drive throughs are busier than ever and parking lots are empty, so we have a lot of controls going on. Chick-fil-A nationally has different programs in place. So, I appreciate the point that it does require a responsible manager and it does and it requires a responsible property owner working with that manager, but it can be done and and we've successfully done that in the past.
Mr. Roth.
Thank you. So, this offer from you to be willing to terminate immediately, is that is that fairly new? Was that was that did you present that to us earlier?
It it was something that was discussed both with staff and and during the mediation process. We we incorporated that plan on on our side. I think I did present it to you during our initial application. What's new here really is the stipulations from staff and the gate. The gate is certainly new. So, we we viewed that as a fairly significant compromise to permanently gate that cross access.
Okay. Because I I can tell you that, I mean, and 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 would you because my my guess is, like you just said, with COVID and everyone wanting to do things from their car, my guess is you're going to have backup in the first week. So, so the question is, you know, I I think that your offer pretty much takes care of it because personally, I don't think I think you're going to have backup almost immediately. I don't think it's going to work without backup. I do see the the downfalls of closing off the entrance and, you know, ingress egress for for everybody just to deal with the coffee shop. So, you know, we're trying to work with within the confines of mediation. I I think I think it was a good offer from Mr. Gallo. I don't remember hearing from you that you would be willing to terminate the the window immediately if this was a problem because I could tell you, I think it's going to become a problem. I I really do. I mean, if if all we're going to do is run an experiment to see if this is a problem, I could tell you that's probably what's going to happen.
Councilman, we are we are absolutely willing to terminate that drive through window in the event that we have a backup.
Well, quite often, sometimes I'm willing to go with things just to prove that, you know, this ain't going to work, but let's give it a try. I mean, if that's if we've got that as as part of the agreement, I I'm just trying to I think it was good for Mr. Gallo to bring up the mediation, you know, this been good, this is a ping pong ball right now.
Yes, sir.
So, I'd I'd like to be working towards a solution and I think with the offer that you terminate the lease, I mean, I'm comfortable with that because I think it pretty much is going to take care of itself. I think probably within definitely within the first month, you're going to have to exercise that. And I just want to make sure we're not standing here having the city, you know, city staff argue with your staff over what what constitutes the term backup.
No, sir. I think I think it's very clear what would and wouldn't constitute blocking the driveway with cars that are in that drive through lane. If there's cars blocking the driveway that are in that drive through lane, we've breached the condition.
And and also on Manatee?
Understood.
I mean, that's that's what we're concerned about.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I think this it's this is a little ironic. We, as a city council, are charged to make responsible decisions for the citizens of this city and part of that is safety. I think that everybody up on this diocese agrees that there is going to be a problem if it's permitted to be an entrance. And it's our position should be to prevent that because we know it's going to happen, not place it on the side and say, okay, here's the deal. You can do it and if it happens, then you got to stop it. We know it's going to happen. If you if you work around go around this, look how screwed up that coffee shop is on First Street and Manatee Avenue. People off of First Street trying to get into that, I can't even think of the name of the coffee shop.
Starbucks.
Starbucks, thank you. I'm not a big coffee drinker, just five cups a day.
Well, that explains a lot.
For them trying to get in there and the problems that they cause. And I don't know how that got by us or if it didn't come to us and just the planning department approved that, but this sits in front of us because this is a change from the original development plan, just like the Fresh Market replaced Beef O'Brady's. This is a change that we have we we have to approve or not approve. And I think that we've got to stand our ground and tell the developer, this is what we want. This is what you have to do. If you want to do it, fine. If you don't, that's your decision, not our decision. And and I just I'm really asking the council to think deep about the safety issue. Let's don't change it after somebody gets hurt in an accident, say, okay, it's not going to work, let's change it.
Mr. Roth.
Well, and 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 I mean, I agree with you and that's what we said. And then it went to court and and went to mediation and the mediator did not agree with us. So, that's why that's why we're not that's why we're in this boat right now is that we we did that and and now we're now we're just trying to comply with them with mediation. So, we're not we already did your your approach.
I I understand that, Mr. Roth, and I can assure you, in in the 29 years that I've been here, we don't necessarily agree with a mediator every time it comes up. Just because they're mediator doesn't make them right. But we we are charged with this responsibility. And I think that's where you got to you got to dig in deep. I've already had comments from people that are in that area and said, oh, my God, don't let that happen. Has they have they not driven on Manatee Avenue, especially in the wintertime? When those cars, especially when that light changes at at Village Green entrance, people coming in, it is solid to the next light. It's bumper to bumper. Can you just imagine a backup what will happen on that road?
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Byrne.
If I could ask our planner to step up, Mr. McQuary? Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm correct in what I'm saying because I'm looking at and I want again, we got a lot of paperwork on this and I want to make sure that I'm looking at the most recent, looking at a modification to magistrate recommendation prepared by city staff. Looking at this, and this was something that we received, it was on the agenda date for July 8th. Is there a newer one that I am not seeing? And my question is, when I look at the plan that we have here in front of us and I look at these modifications, it appears that if the council were to approve the development according to this plan, we would need to remove number three and number four from the staff recommendations because I'd want to include I would want the staff recommendations. Some of this makes a lot of sense. I if if the council chooses to approve it and if they choose to go with this idea, there's number three, which says the applicant shall ensure that the primary drive aisle from Manatee Avenue remains clear of cued vehicles. That eliminates that, so we would eliminate that from your your modifications or recommendations and that the staff will ensure that vehicles attempting to access the site do not back up on Manatee Avenue. Again, this would alleviate that so we could, should we choose to move to accept whatever plan it is. And if it's this one, we would need to include the modifications of number one, number two, number five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, and remove number three and four. Am I correct?
You're correct. First of all, Marshall McQuary, planning and zoning manager with Planning and Community Development. You're absolutely right. That was prepared without viewing these proposals here. So, the proposals become make it somewhat dynamic and so some of those stipulations would fall off and not necessarily be applicable. The changes that are proposed here haven't been fully evaluated by the entire Development Review Committee. There may be some recommendations there that in fact can be softened some because of the changes in the dynamics resulting from the change to the ingress off of Manatee as well as the gate.
So.
For sure, the three and four.
Am I hearing that perhaps you would prefer this tabled until the next council meeting so that your development group can look at it?
Um, not no. What I would prefer is that you, if you do endorse approval of this with certain stipulations, that it still be subject to staff's review for compliance with those stipulations as well as any additional safety measures that staff feels necessary for public safety. But our direction would be to approve, just as we would anything else, but I'm reluctant to speak on behalf of Public Works, for example, which has facilities back there that are served. Based on the change in dynamic here, it may mean certain of the signage elements that we include in some of our stipulations and the mirroring, some of that may not be necessary with the change in the traffic flow that results.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, could you re you said, should we approve it, you would still like it to come back and just be tweaked?
At a staff administrative level, just like any other any other project would. There's an SIP approval associated with the the advent of this improvement here. So, if you do endorse it with your stipulations, staff would still need to review it for technical muster.
Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For right now, sure.
Okay. Marshall, you saying that you wanted to go back and and roundtable it with Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, planning?
What I'm trying to say is as with anything else, what you're you're looking at is the advent of this use and the change in circulation here. So, if you bless that, it still has to come back through staff's technical review, just like any other project would before it can get construction permits.
Well, you are aware that Public Works drew this up for me at my request and I'm sure if there was a problem, Public Works would have said, uh, this is not the way we're supposed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And also, the Fire Department certainly is acceptable to it, which are two main departments.
I'm trying to speak to some of the specific stipulations that were provided, specific to signage and direction and trying to minimize conflicts in the back. The advent of this reduces some of those conflicts perhaps and therefore some of the specific stipulations might not be necessary. We're also looking at a significant change in traffic flow and incoming traffic off of the the other entrance if the this entrance is closed. So, there will be some possible changes to the circulation in the back.
I'd be surprised if there was. I've spent enough time out there now that I I should be on their payroll in walking the the most dangerous part of it. I still think that we're not correcting is the traffic that's going to be coming in the back of that building through the alley, but that's going to be a problem in itself. But, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'm I'm going to either write it or die it. I would like to make a motion that the council support what I have presented today in the form of of a drawing that they have before them.
With the staff stipulations?
With the staff stipulations, yes.
Could I have Mr. Mathis?
We have a do we have a.
Got a motion in a second.
I'll go ahead and second. I'll second it to get it to discussion.
Okay, I thought she'd say, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I I'd like to hear from Mr. Mathis as to what the issues which point to us, so we all have a better understanding, where the coffee shop is going to be and how the proposal is for you to bring traffic in and not block, why do you think that will not block that second exit?
Councilman, the the coffee shop's on the corner of the building here.
That's what, okay.
Drive through windows on the back.
Right. So, their preferred way to come in is going from west to east to come in right beside the storage facility, come in, get the shot of your coffee and and go out the other exit at the other cross street.
Yes, sir.
So, people will obviously try to avoid the so the backup would be probably from the first entrance backwards. So, people will say, well, I want to get in a hurry and I want to go down here to the second exit and and go that way. Is that the issue?
Councilman, you know, we studied a lot.
Why is a second why is a second turn of concern is what I'm trying to figure out?
You mean at the traffic light?
No, that where it says exit only.
Why are we concerned about having a?
Why why is anybody concerned about that because they're trying to shortcut the the flow of getting into the coffee shop?
Just to be clear, where the red part is on here, they have agreed to close that off. So, you don't come in that.
Oh, you can't even come in that at all?
Not at all.
Oh, okay, I thought it was just a one way.
No, sir. There would be a gate that was.
A gate, I I thought the gate was just only opening one way.
And then you come in where it says exit only down here on Mr. Gallo's drawing. You come in that way.
And reasons for that is because of the the storage facility didn't want that much traffic in front of their storage facility?
Councilman, I think I think staff was concerned and there was concern about the internal conflicts of cars in the drive through lane facing opposing traffic. It was really an internal parking lot circulation concern that led to that. That's my understanding of of staff's recommendation.
Councilman Sanders, just to clarify what you were saying there, the the flow of the drive through is east to west. It's not west to east, so it would come that way around the building.
Say it again.
The the flow of the drive through is what you were asking at the at the outset? It's from east to west around the corner of the building.
Can you show him that on the map?
East to west.
If you would. Point out how the traffic comes in.
A car that is eastbound on Manatee Avenue.
Eastbound was so it's west from west to east.
Is going to enter the drive through lane.
And then come around, right.
And they're going to pick up.
And then go back out the other side.
Here.
Right.
And and come all the way. Do they exit behind the building?
Behind the building.
Yes. Right. Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's clear about how.
Yes, it's from from west to east.
The drive through lane.
They're they're coming from the west, going to the east, coming in the exit only.
You'd be coming west to east on Manatee Avenue and then going east to west through the drive through.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Byrne.
Under discussion. Looking at this and using the scale of the cars that we have on on the picture in front of us, because I'm assuming, you know, this was like a Google Earth picture, is that correct, Mr. McQuary? And so, you know, when you look at it that way, if you have people coming in through where it says exit only and they start queuing up, looking at these cars from the point of the drive through to me, the uneducated, non-engineer, you might be able to get four cars there before they start sticking out into that drive aisle there.
Councilwoman, the code requirement, I believe, is five cars. We have five cars from the order board and so we met the code requirement.
Okay, I I understand that. I do also want to say that I think many times, and I haven't seen a single one, Benderson Developments are beautifully landscaped and well-kept. So, I do appreciate everything that you all do. I would love to be able to support this. I just can't support it without this change.
Councilwoman, we're not prepared to make that change. We can't make that change without FDOT being involved and and I appreciate that there has been a lot of time spent on a thousand square foot coffee shop over the course of a couple of years, but we're not prepared to do that because you're going to send all of the traffic for the remainder of the shopping center that is eastbound on Manatee Avenue to the traffic signal and create a worse circumstance at that queue. We're not going to do that to the county, we're not going to do that to our shopping center. And we believe that we can comply with your condition and not back a car into Manatee Avenue. We've agreed to a fairly significant stipulation that requires us to stop in the event it ever happens. It's it's a rather extraordinary position to take, but we're willing to do it because we feel the same way about this relationship.
we feel the same way about this relationship with the city.
And, and if this is not appropriate for me to ask, you don't have to answer it. But is, is this someone's franchise that they've purchased, and you're going to have to go in and tell them they can't keep doing business?
It's a fine question. Kawa, they're all owned by one corporate owner. He's a local person in St. Pete. We have a number of relationships with him in, in different tenant spaces, and so he would lose his drive-through here. He's aware of that risk.
So then he would just, he would operate as a walk-in only?
Uh, no, he would have the right, the reciprocal right, to just close the store and not owe us any rent. If you really want to understand the full, the full terms of our deal, we're, we're both willing to take all this risk because we believe it works.
And that's in the agreement?
Yes, sir.
Scott, is that enforceable?
We will have a development order, because if, if the council ultimately elects to move forward with something that's supported by the applicant, it'll come back in a public hearing, and we will have the ability to put stipulations on that development order like we would with, with any other. And that would be the, that would be the enforcement mechanism. Now, obviously, given the, the discussion that we've had here, we would, we would take an extra hard look at, at crafting that stipulation language for this.
Mr. Gallis?
Mr. Mayor, may I come down there to the, I would like to show the council something? If, in fact, I guess this, my, okay, if, in fact, we, we have this as an entrance and an exit, you're not only concerned about traffic coming here and backing up, but remember the people that are coming from the east and from the north at that intersection that are going to go to that coffee shop, are going to come down here and come in the main entrance, and they're going to drive in front of those, and they're going to meet the traffic that's coming in for the coffee that's already got that place half-stopped up. So then you've got a traffic jam right here, you've got cars that want to exit only, but they're going to be caught in blocked cars because they're waiting to get in the line to go get a cup of coffee. It is just a horrible, horrible place to set up, and the plan for this just is not right for the location. And I think we really have to consider all the way around what an exit and entrance is going to do. There's nothing to prevent people from coming in there and getting coffee. It's just a matter of them being safe.
Mr. Gallis, what keeps them from coming in by the storage facility and getting to the gate and getting all jammed up, jammed up there?
First of all, that, that, that entrance doesn't get used because at one time, the storage area had a sign there that didn't want people coming through there.
Yeah, but I've always came down going from west to, or east to west, and got in that turn lane and turned into the storage to go to Five Guys.
Yes.
I've always done that.
Yes.
So now you're going to need to turn at the traffic light?
So now you're going to have to turn at the traffic light, so that center lane's going to have to be taken out? That's turn lane up here in the center, man, is going to be taken out?
You're still turning into the storage facility.
Coming into the shopping center from the traffic light.
But again, people that's been around here forever says, I'm going to that coffee shop, I'm going to turn left. Now I'm going to get up there and get, get to a gate.
Coming from where?
Coming from west, or east to west, and I turn like I'm going into the, the storage facility, and I get up to the gate, and I can't get into the coffee shop, how do I get back out?
You have to, you have to do a three-point turn and go back out the way you came in.
Is that causing them more problem?
Well, people-
I think the gate's going to be readily-
Because I would, I would, if I was going to get coffee today, that's how I'd come in, rather than turn at the light, I'd come down here, get in there and say, wait a minute.
Why don't you go through safely at the light rather than making a U-turn?
Well, I don't know, because that's the way I've been doing it.
Not at that place you have it.
Oh, yes, I have. I go to Five Guys all the time.
Shame on you.
Shame on me. Well, I, I don't support McDonald's anymore, but whatever.
You can try Shake Pit. Shake Pit's a wonderful-
Well, I could, I've done that, too.
Just saying.
Anyway, I just wanted to-
Mr. Gallis, to your point that you're talking about now?
I'm sorry?
The, the point you're talking about now and the traffic, it's the identical situation to what you have at Starbucks on First, because you turn right off one street, but you also, people also come in from the other way, and they queue up on the drive-through in the same way.
You're talking about Starbucks?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a screwed-up mess.
I've used that for years.
Does that mean that, that thing on First Street should not be an entrance by any means?
I've used that, personal experience.
You've been lucky.
I'm a Starbucks every day, so, and I go to that one, and it's not really a big-
You have not been there every day if you have not seen that thing blocked up.
I go through there every day. I don't see it blocked up, but what's, I ask the owner-
That's my case.
I understand.
I just want to go on record.
I'm just trying to understand.
It's my responsibility. People have already talked to me about it. You guys want to let Benderson do it, have at it.
What if you came in that ex, I'll ask the owner, what if that was a sort of exit only, an entrance only, and you had to exit out on the cross street?
It would help.
Would that, that's, that's not permissible to you either?
You know, we, we would prefer to have it be an entrance exit, but, you know, in terms of our, our personal opinion, the entrance is more important than the exit.
Right.
We're okay keeping people inside our shopping centers, it's getting them in.
But what I'm saying, if, if you approved that and it came in problem, why couldn't you make it an entrance only, and then they'd have to exit out on the cross street?
We, we could, we could certainly-
Because that, I, I've been in there, and I don't see a lot of people exiting there anyway.
Correct.
Generally, they go out the other way. I don't know why. I mean, and again, I'm just a frequent visitor of Five Guys, so that's my experience. I generally come in by the, the, the storage facility, go to Five Guys, and then I'll exit out that way because it's convenient. But I don't see a lot of people exiting, but if that was an entrance only and you had to exit out on the cross street, I don't think that that would hurt the, the flow of traffic for the shopping center.
We don't, we don't disagree, but it's a new way.
It also doesn't do much for the issue that Mr. Gallis has, is people, stacking people up on Manatee Avenue.
Well, I think this gate's going to be more of a problem than anything, because I, I know I would go through there and get jammed up, and they have three-point turn and turn in.
But you have room to do that.
They have a sign that says-
Because at one point, they did have a-
I know there's going to be a, there's going to be a learning curve for people like me.
At one point, correct me if I'm wrong, years ago, the storage facility put up pretty much an illegal gate there, because they were tired of people cutting through. And I think that we had to go tell them it was an illegal gate, and they had to take it down, and that's when they started putting in all of the-
Speed bumps.
-speed bumps and everything to discourage the cut-through traffic. It will be a learning curve, absolutely, but it's the same learning curve that happened when FDOT came through and changed a lot on Manatee Avenue and on Cortez Road to make, require you to do a U-turn rather than have a cross street.
Instead of going into the, the storage facility, be able to do a U-turn there and then come back to that exit?
They can do that now.
They can do that now?
Mm-hmm.
Won't that be more of a problem?
Councilman, I, I think the compromise that was offered is, is going to work by staff. We're not prepared to give up the right end. That gate, we understand that there is that history involving the gate. I think if someone had taken the step of providing a, a fire-accessible gate, the city probably would have allowed it. Our understanding is there's, there is no legal right of cross-access. It's been a, sort of an ongoing loose end between the two developments for a long time.
Yeah.
So we're, we're prepared to do that. We, we agree it's a learning curve. That is how I enter the center when I'm there, but certainly you can use the signal or make a legal U-turn.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Roth, you have something else?
Yes, I do. The, the resolution states, and, and in the middle of it, it says, this is what I'm concerned with, rejecting the recommendations of the special magistrate. You know, the whole idea is, we're headed to court, we're in mediation, we got a recommendation from a special magistrate, and we're telling them, we reject your recommendation. And there seems to be a compromise. I liked Mr. Gallis' compromise. The applicant didn't like the compromise, but then the applicant threw out there that if this is a problem, we'll terminate the window, which is the problem.
Yes, sir.
Car's gone. Now it turns out that they, it even gives them the option of leaving, breaking the lease. So, I mean, which I don't want to see anyone do that, but, you know, I mean, there seems to be, we're, we're supposed to be working towards a give-and-take. What we're talking about is, if traffic backs up, it's going to be a problem. Well, we've got an offer that if traffic backs up, they'll terminate the window. I think, you know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a free-market guy. You know, the market will decide what the market's going to do. If the people want to behave themselves and operate in a, in a safe manner and buy their coffee at the drive-up window, that's great. If they want to back up traffic, then the lease will be terminated on the window and possibly, whatever happens after that doesn't matter, so, and this way, we're not rejecting the recommendation of a special magistrate. It'll either work or it won't, and it'll either fix itself or, or it fixes itself. And that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Mr. Roth, I believe the discussion with the applicant is that if the, if the traffic backs up, it terminates not just the window, but the business.
If they want.
They would have the right to, to break the lease and, and close, that's correct.
If they want.
Have to redo the lease.
Again, what's, what's the, who's going to be the enforcing body on this? How, other than, you know, we could, we pick up the paper and there's been a huge accident there, how, how do we enforce this? It's, it's a, it's a difficult thing.
Yeah, the discussion earlier, they have this in other-
Yeah, but I, I'm not, I don't have to say grace over what other people do in other communities.
I'm just saying, this is not a, a one-off, that's normal.
Well, again, this, this was the horrible thing about working for the MP, or working as an MPO board member and dealing with traffic issues, was that you look at some of these things, and if everybody conducted themselves as if they lived in Mr. Rogers' neighborhood, you probably would not have a problem. Unfortunately, I don't see that a lot anymore, and-
Councilwoman, I, I, while I appreciate the concern, you know, as, as, as a landlord of a lot of property, we have, we have hours of operation restrictions, we have noise ordinance restrictions that apply to us, we have driveway restrictions, whether it's a right-in, right-out, or otherwise, that people have the opportunity to violate, but it's on us to ensure compliance, and we deal with those things with our tenants all day long. So I, I appreciate the concern about enforcement, but we're very used to getting a letter from a municipality that says, your restaurant was open till 11:00 PM, and, and they have a hard stop at 9:00 PM. You have residents out back you promised. And, and we fix those situations when they occur, if they occur. I don't have a lot of that work, honestly. I mean, it, it happens, but it's not an extraordinary volume of, of non-compliance. You know, we have responsible tenants, we help them understand what their obligations are, what it took to get them the right to operate, and we work with responsible tenants.
And, and I, I applaud you for doing that. I really appreciate you doing it because it does make your developments quality developments. Someone has a restaurant stay open past 11:00, they lose a little hour's sleep. Someone gets in a bad enough accident here, they lose their life, and that's where I'm coming from. I've seen people driving down that road, you know, they're, they're reading their cellphones or doing something, and all of a sudden, the traffic stops in front of them, and they have to stop in an instant.
And, and Councilwoman, that's why we went to pretty great lengths to analyze traffic with, with very qualified transportation planners. I mean, the amount of time and effort and money we spent on analyzing transportation solutions here is very significant. We take it seriously. If that, if that accident is one foot over the line on our property, we don't have sovereign immunity, it's all us, and we deal with that a lot. So we take that very seriously also.
Mr. Gallis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question for Mr. Roth. Patrick, do you believe that if it was presented before the magistrate, that the city council has a concern about safety issue on this particular thing, that he would have approved it? He has no idea about this issue, nothing, because that was not brought up.
I, we were told that if we didn't approve it, we were going to be, we were going to go to court. I, I'm assuming that happened. I'm assuming, we went to arbitration, that, that went to special magistrate, and what I, what I believe is, now, if we reject the recommendations of special magistrate, and then we go back to court, I think we've got the chips pretty much stacking up against us, is what I believe.
Councilman, if I could just add-
Wait a minute, may I react to, excuse me. I, I totally disagree with you.
Okay.
Because we're dealing with a safety issue, and, and if we go back to court, fine. We've been sued before.
All right.
That's the reason why we carry insurance.
If, if I could, let me touch on both of those issues. First of all, we have not been in court. This is a, the fluadra process is a process that is designed to try to encourage some type of resolution, so there has not been anything filed in court. If we were not to reach a resolution through this process, then it would be the applicant's option if they, if they wanted to pursue a remedy through the courts. To Councilman Gallis' comment, we absolutely presented, from the staff's side, all of the safety concerns to the magistrate. It was discussed not only during the mediation process, but also during our, our public hearing process, so with, with all of the city staff participating in, in those hearings.
Scott, are you saying that when you, were you there?
Yes.
You're saying that we presented the fact to the magistrate that the city council had a concern about traffic backing up, backing up at that, when it had never been brought up until it came before us?
Yes, that, that was the, there were two primary safety concerns that were presented. One was the traffic backing up onto Manatee Avenue if the traffic got queued across the drive aisle there, and then the other issue was the circulation around the rear of the store. Those were the two primary staff concerns that were presented to the, to the magistrate.
How about the circulation with, within the compound that's going to come to the coffee shop and meet head-on with the traffic that's coming off of Manatee Avenue?
Right.
Was that discussed, too?
It was all, it was all discussed, I mean-
And that magistrate had no concern with safety issues?
I'm not going to say that he didn't have any concerns, and I want to speak for him. He has a lengthy recommendation that's in the packet. But his finding was that this was a, an unreasonable burden on the property and that the city should approve it. I think that, and if you look at his recommendation, I think that one of the things he looked at was that the applicant is meeting our objective standards for queuing in a drive-through, and the concerns that are being raised are the, I, I think what we would all view as the, what is the reality potentially, that it, you're going to have instances where you go beyond the required queuing, and that's where, you know, that's where we're getting into the discussion we're having now. But yes, all of those concerns, we, we had hours of mediation where we all sat around a table, city staff, fire, public works, and went through the various concerns, the potential solutions and things like that, and then had a full public hearing where they were presented to him again, so.
Well, Scott, while I respect you, sir, and you know I do, and, and counsel, I'll, I'll quit running my mouth, but I just got one statement to make. If, in fact, this council approves this, then we should be, shame on us if we ever try to stop a development because we feel like it's going to impact the road. Shame on us, because we're doing two different things, and it's wrong. That's what this is. This is going to impact that road and traffic, and we stop development all the time, changing, changing from R2 to R3 because it's going to impact the road. What is the difference? The difference is that a magistrate was hired, did he get to hear the way at least one loud-mouthed councilman feels about it? I, I live out there. I drive that all the time. I go to Publix all the time, and I'm telling you, in the wintertime, it is a flipping nightmare with the traffic, and we are asking for trouble by doing this right here. Believe me, friends, it's going to happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have the comments, we have a motion and a second to approve the plan that Mr. Gallis has in front of us.
We have a motion and a second to approve the plan that Mr. Gallo has in front of us. Any more discussion? Councilwoman Barnaby?
Thank you. I really wish I felt more comfortable about this. I can't get there, and if we end up going to court over this and the court says, "Okay, go ahead and put it in," I will have some measure of comfort that if someone is hurt badly, maimed, or killed there, I didn't want to do it in the first place, and a court made me, so I have no problem with us going to court over this. If that's what, if that's what it's, if that's what it's gonna take for you to get that there because this council feels it's dangerous, it is not a reflection on your ability to run your properties. It is a reflection on perhaps the culture that we're in today, where everybody's in a hurry and everybody thinks that their business and their time is more important than anybody else's, and they won't let somebody in front of them to get in a queue. It's gonna be an issue, and I cannot support this. I mean, I'm going to support Mr. Gallo's motion. I can't support what has been presented to us as a compromise. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, just to explain my vote, that to stay, to not be rejecting the recommendations of the special magistrate, an agreement has been made that if this becomes an issue, it will go away. It will, so what are we talking about? A week, two weeks, a month? I mean, what constitutes an issue to you?
Who determines it's an issue?
What's the time period of it's an issue?
Councilman, we didn't ask staff to modify the recommendation. I think it's very clear. If it happens once, the city has a right to make us close our window. We have a reciprocal right to make our tenant close their window. They have a reciprocal right to close their business.
So, an issue is one occasion?
We didn't ask for, "Let us try three times." We didn't ask for a mediation process. It's an extraordinary remedy. It's an extraordinary offer. We, I'm, you know, I could go on and on about traffic and safety, and I'm gonna let it go.
That's fine. That answers my question. So, if it happens one time, it's an issue, you tell them...
If what happens, that's what I'm trying to find out. An accident or just traffic?
Traffic backs up.
If traffic blocks up, and I'm out there and I take a video of it and bring it in, he's gonna change it.
That's what he said.
That's perfect proof, Councilman. We're ready to do it.
That's what he said.
You know, we're ready to manage it, we're ready to respond to it. It's a risk we'll take to try and work things out with the city. You know, again, we know it's an extraordinary offer from our perspective. Did we have to give it? I don't think we did, frankly, but we want to work with you, and that's the best I can do.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this? All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Gallo's plan, which is in front of every councilperson.
With the stipulations from the staff and them looking to remove the ones that will not come into effect if this is the plan that is brought, given to them for development.
Which is what Marcy and I agreed to.
Right.
All right. No more discussion. Let's vote. Ward four?
No.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
No. Thank you.
Motion is approved. The grade's three to two.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Just no chance?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, just so the councils are aware, we'll bring back a, we had prepared a resolution based on the prior action. We'll prepare a new resolution based on the action today, and we'll put that on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Math. Just no chance?
Next, Attorney Rudisil has proposed revisions to the Ballard Park post-closing development agreement.
Gallo?
Thank you, counsel. These are, this is for the lots, particularly the two lots that we are fixing to close on, on the Ballard Park area. The developer came forward and requested that they be given an additional six months to complete the project, complete the first home. They were concerned that, once they go to closing, to only have 12 months to get a CO created some problems for them, that if there were some extenuating circumstances that they couldn't get, couldn't get closed, that they would like 18 months versus 12 months. This post-closing development agreement only pertains to the first two lots that they're talking about closing. It does not pertain to the remaining eight, or the remaining six. So, what we're doing is extending their time to get CO for the first two lots, which they're ready to close on, and we're ready to close, like, last week. This issue came up. We said we'd bring it to council. I think we can recommend approval of this one. Whether it would carry over to the next six, it would have to be discussed by you each, I think, each time that they would come forward for closing. It doesn't, I don't think it changes the underlying agreement that we have on the lots, doesn't change any of that. Scott, is that correct?
Well, I think I'd rather have some direction from the council now, so we don't have to come back with a new development agreement, because when we approved the original contract for this, it attached a development agreement, and so that's what we intended to use for each of the closings. So, the purchaser's now asked to extend that building timeframe, so I think I would like some direction as to whether this is just a one-time, that the council would like us to modify the development agreement, or whether we can use the 18 months throughout for the other lots.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was on the special team that screened out this applicant, and at the time, our concern was whether he was actually really wanting to build or just kind of dabble, so I think that's why we put restrictions in there, strict restrictions. I can tell you that in that area, in that neighborhood, right now, there have been, there's total of eight homes that have been built, or under construction or been built in the last couple of years. Only two or three are completed. They both took more than 12 months, far more than 12 months. I was surprised with that. There's two that are under construction, three, three, literally what it's, I can't see where they can build a home in 12 months right now. I mean, I'm watching the market operate, and it seems to take, be taking longer than that. Two are almost done, and in one, so anyway, that's what, I think that's a reasonable request.
Mr. Roth, these are prefabs.
I know, I, right.
Different than a regular construction.
I understand that, that they're coming in like that, but we're also...
These should be three, four months doing that.
Well, with all the...
This came forward, we're, we do not recommend that we, I mean, we're fine with it on these two. The question is, every time he fixes to go to closing, do you want to, do you want to automatically do it, or do you want them to have to come back? I mean, I think that's part of the question is, is this particular agreement references these two, but I think by, almost by default, it would, it would carry over to the next group of them, and the idea is, we want performance, that's all it's about. We're not trying to say, "I'm sorry, you don't, there's a real problem, give us the lots back. You're two-thirds of the way through construction at the 12-month period." That's, you know, that's not what we're trying to be. We just want to make sure that he gets going from the time that he gets his permits issued till 12, it's actually from time of closing till 12 months. So, if he, if he gets in trouble getting through the permit process, and I think part of this comes out of the discussion we had last week, two weeks ago, on the East Side projects, about water, whatever else, sewer, those kind of things. So, it's saying, "Okay, if I run into a similar issue, am I gonna be penalized by that fact?" And I think this is, you know, it allows time, it gives us, gives him the comfort he needs, and if for some reason he doesn't produce under this timeframe, we would have a whole new set of issues to deal with, whether he can perform or will perform.
Whether this goes beyond, if it's only for the first two, it doesn't matter to me whether it's the first two or all eight, because, and I think that once, once he does the first one in there with the floodplain requirements and finding out, my experience is, the first time you do anything, it takes a little longer, and by the time you do the last one, it's really fast.
My only guess would be, the first six will be very smooth. The Ware's Creek lots may well be different houses, and may take a longer time to be able to do, once you get into those, those may be different than what he's planned for the first six lots.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Barnaby?
I'm perfectly comfortable with just doing these two and see what happens, and, you know, I mean, let's, let's see what happens. I mean, I, not a builder, but I can understand that sometimes people may have problems getting supplies right now, there's, the supply chain has broken down in certain areas for all sorts of things. So, I'm comfortable with doing it for two. I don't know how long I, how comfortable I would be with every one of them just being allowed to sit or not get started, if that makes sense.
Well, they, currently, what we're doing, the reason we're doing it now is we're closing on the two lots. We are not closing on the rest of the lots. We are under contract with the rest of the lots, but not closing.
Okay.
And the development agreement says here, it says, "Which lot shall only be lots subject to this development agreement unless and until the other lots are conveyed to the developer." So, when they're conveyed on a basis, then I think the question is, does this then apply when they're conveyed? Or do you need to come back for a separate, separate agreement?
Right, and just to kind of, you know, bring everybody back to where, what this agreement is at the outset, he has a two-year window for the eight lots, and as he takes those lots down, as he closes on the lots, then the development agreement kicks in and provides for the timeframe for him to complete the construction, so that's what we're talking about. And so, this one is the first two lots. If the council would prefer for us to come back and have him request an extension again, if he needs an extension on the, on the remainder of the lots, we're happy to do that.
And he has the right to reject the next six, right?
Yes, he doesn't have to close on any of them.
I, with Mr. Roth, I think it's fine.
And staff is recommending, we're just saying, we, based on all of our concerns about trying to make, our goal is to make sure the houses get built.
Right.
That was the whole goal behind everything, and hopefully continue in a pretty continuous process once it gets started. We're starting to see that with the closing in the first two lots. I think they'll start falling like dominos, as long as there's no major changes and stuff, and we've probably seen that major change happen within the last eight months that we would see, which is the pandemic.
Right, and at the time that this was considered, that he came forward, he had, he'd done a development in, I think, Lakeland or that area, but he hadn't done anything here, so he hadn't proven himself here, and from what I understand, he's got a couple of project, he's got a couple of homes, or one home over in the East Side. So, I mean, the whole idea was, we weren't sure whether he was really a builder or just dabbling, and that's why restrictions were put in there. He wants to build these things. That's fine. That's all, that's all we wanted, was redevelopment.
Scott, can you give us a language on this motion?
It would just be a motion to approve the...
Ballard Park Post Development.
The revisions to the Ballard Park Development Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And that applies to these two only?
Agreed.
And to clarify, well, whose motion was it?
Mine.
Is your motion for just for these?
The discussion had been just for the first two lots.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing done, let's vote. Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Votes five to zero. Thank you all. Council reports, Mr. Gallo?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Barnaby?
Well, as you mentioned, it's kind of a, this has been kind of a historic week for people of my gender, receiving the right to vote, and I was fortunate enough to have a grandmother that was still around and told me what she felt like the first time she walked down to vote, and that was really cool, and that's my report.
Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that over the last couple of meetings, we've done some, some pretty big items that I'm not sure were noticed, and they had, they touched on two major issues that were brought up with the year-long debate over the charter discussion, which is on the ballot, and I just received a call from someone yesterday about, about what that is and what it's all about, so that there's really still, you know, not enough information out there. The first, the first two questions that were debated over was, was whether, that the assertion has been made for many years now, the last two mayors anyway, over 40 years, that the mayor has total control over the PD, which I don't agree with. And then, the second one was a discussion that PD would never be able to work with the city council, even though every other department works with the city council with no problem. So, what I wanted to point out was that we had just, PD had wanted to accept a federal grant, and I'm assuming the mayor wanted it too, I didn't hear, but anyway, they couldn't do it because it had kick in, it had affected the, it affected the city budget, and that anything that affects the city budget has to have approval of the council. So, not only did the city council go along with the grant acceptance, but we actually, to help keep the balance budgeted over the last two, over, through the, the projected shortcomings, we decided to pay for the grant out of the CRAs. The second question was this, that the PD cannot work with the city council and the mayor, like every other department, well, when in fact, we just did that, twice, through the city council, and then again, as the council acting as the CRA, we went ahead and approved that. So, it pretty much contradicted the assertions that have been made over that time, and I also wanted to point out that this council's been very generous to PD. We went through the union negotiations, and before coronavirus had happened, there was already an agreement with the higher staff, the lieutenants, but not with the rank-and-file, so we went ahead and committed to funding a full contract for three years, not knowing what was gonna happen with, you know, the coronavirus economy hit, that we found out in the last budget meeting that the PD is gonna be $600,000 over last year's budget, when we're expecting other departments to be, you know, not doing that, and then also that the, with the addition of the COPS grants, that anyone is stating that this city council is doing some kind of, I don't know what we're being accused of, but anyway, it's all been, it's all been disclaimed by the last couple of meetings and the actions taken by the council. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sanders?
When's our next meeting?
When's our what?
When's our next council meeting? 12th?
9th.
9th? And then our budget 501 is 12th?
It's also the 9th.
It's also the 9th.
Also on the 9th?
It's the 5th.
So, are we done with the budget?
It's in the afternoon.
In the afternoon. So, we're done with budget discussions?
Up until, at the last meeting, we asked if anybody had other things they wanted to bring up, or if we wanted to schedule another meeting to discuss more items, and there was no comment.
There was no comment.
I just want to make sure the council's satisfactory with everything they're seeing. I mean, I'd personally like to have more discussion, but if nobody else wants to, I guess I have to find a mirror someplace.
No, you can certainly talk to us. I mean, we're, we're out there to be able to talk about anything.
No, I'd like to talk to council, but is everybody agreeable to that? If so, I'll move on. I don't have anything else.
So, are you, are you saying that you would prefer...
I had the same question last time, and nobody said anything.
I don't remember that question, but...
Are you saying you would prefer to have a workshop where we could discuss it?
I prefer to have a more in-depth discussion that we didn't have.
And... And our next council 501 meeting to discuss the budget is?
The first 501 meeting is September 9th.
So, and we have?
Five oh, yes.
We have two of those.
Yes. And the next one was the following Thursday, I believe.
So, there are, there are two already scheduled opportunities to have the council sitting here and to discuss the budget in depth.
Uh, two?
The 501 meetings. I mean, am I misunderstanding, I mean, that's, so have you boys been doing something different since I've not been here? That's what we did. We could discuss them at 501 meetings.
Yeah, um.
That's what that meeting is for.
Yeah, one of, one of, one of the things, um, yeah, yeah, we do have, uh, two 501s with public hearings and so forth. What we've, um, done my, over the past few years, my understanding is that if we wanted to, uh, we did handle some of it, say, on the, uh, within the workshop, uh, type of environment. And, uh, I'm, at this point, uh, we do have, um, I believe that would be the second is the first Wednesday. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Yes.
You know, I'm okay, you know, and I know we, we said with the, you know, COVID-19, we were, uh, pretty much postponing the workshops. And so, I kind of took it as, uh, you know, not, you know, coming back up here for that. But, uh, if, uh, the rest of council, I have no, no problem. Uh, every Wednesday on, on my calendar, whether it's a workshop or a council meeting, I, I keep my, my calendar clear. So, I have no problem if, uh, council wants to come and, you know, have any type of, uh, workshop, uh, to discuss, uh, the budget any further.
Yeah, I, I guess, uh, I, I, I have no problem meeting on the second. Normally, from the years that I've been on the council, by the time we get to the 501s, we have things pretty much hashed out and they're very short meetings. They're basically to approve what has been discussed. Uh, I've, I've seen, um, you know, no one's, the citizens don't attend, that the, usually the meetings are over in, uh, you know, 30 minutes or less because we've already, we've already hashed everything out. So, that's just what we've always done. Right. That's the reason I brought it up because the last two, this being my third year, the 501s are just, uh. They're not discussion. There, there's no discussion. It's just yea or nay. And, and then so. And discussions obviously happened before, and I just don't think we've had enough discussion, in my personal opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And in my experience, I mean, particularly the first 501 meeting, I remember several of them where we had reports from department heads and we hashed, and I remember it specifically because I had two kids that were sick at home. And my husband was the school board attorney at that point, so he was at a meeting. And I was trying to get home to sick children. So, I remember how long that meeting was. Um, I mean, it was, it was a couple of hours. And, and there's no reason that they can't be.
I understand. What happens if the, if you can't come to an agreement? Those 501s are, are state statute. Does it get extended or is it, you gotta make a decision before you leave the chambers?
No, you have to, when, when you walk out of the 50, first 501 meeting, we have to have a solidified number because we have to advertise that. You can still change it at the next meeting. What you can't do is you're not going to be changing the millage rate. The millage rate is set.
Right.
You can change items within the budget up until after the second meeting. You know, you just have to solidify.
I have a question.
Not even after.
I'm not suggesting we do change the millage rate, but until, at, when we set the millage rate, you said you could change it. So, I just wanted to clarify. Now, you're saying you can't change?
You can, you can take it down very.
You always take it down?
Very, very difficult.
Can't bring it up. So, we could take it. I'm not suggesting this. I'm just saying we could.
You can do either one. It just becomes very difficult when, it's not difficult to lower, it's very difficult to raise.
To raise. So, the 501 meeting and the ninth is state statute. We have to have that first meeting. So, if there were, were to ever be a dispute, would that delay the process? Or do you have to actually just stay here till you come to an agreement?
You need to finalize a budget for advertising at the end of the first, at the first 501 meeting.
So, you have to come, so isn't that more reason to have more discussion?
A workshop is fine. I mean.
A workshop, but you can't vote in a workshop, so.
You don't vote on the budget in its entirety. You could tell us as a group to change things in it. Absolutely.
Okay.
I think that what you've seen in the past, that changed, probably changed a little bit from, uh, Mrs. Barnaby's days here. We have, we've gone into it. It's gotten to be where there's a ton of changes going on. We went through a whole recession when there were almost no changes to a budget, except for seeing reductions. So, we'd go through the reductions. We'd go through the changes, whether it was through a series of workshops, which is usually what it was. It was through workshops, uh, very few detailed department presentations over the years. But we did, I particularly remember over at Old City Hall and certainly here as well, that we get into, uh, more of the detail. It, it's always fine with us because we're, we want to make sure that you're comfortable with the budget, you know, what's in there. What we wa, really want to try to stay on point when we get into those are, what are the significant changes you're looking at rather than a $50 here or $60 there? Because those in a $125 million budget don't go very far. If there's significant changes you want to make or don't agree with or things that you want to see, I mean, I recommend, it sounds like we have a workshop on the second. It's absolutely fine. That's, I mean, that's absolutely fine.
Well, and on that note, um, two things. One, um, because the last couple of meetings that we've had, we've run into a lot of different things, that the meetings have been both lengthy, where we were, we were, we had budget discussions, but when we have a long meeting, I think all of us kind of get worn down a little bit and maybe not get into a depth. And my, my opinion is, I really don't see the value in workshops. If we're going to have a meeting, it should be just a special meeting. That way, if anything needs to be decided, it can be done, um, rather than, I mean, we're already, we're already here. It's got to be noticed. It's got to be everything that might as well just, you know, whether anything gets voted on or not doesn't matter. But I'd rather just have it be a special meeting than a workshop.
The way you've taken those up, though, most recently, is one of the reasons for the workshop is, yeah, we, we want to try to put a reasonable agenda together as to what it would be. But in a, in a workshop, since you're not making decisions, anything is fair game. You can bring stuff up out of left field and not feel uncomfortable necessarily doing that because we're just trying to create discussion. The workshops were intended to facilitate discussion about upcoming matters. That was really the purpose. When, when we started workshops 10 years ago, it was the idea that we sit in a round table and as a group, we're talking about things that you may not see in an agenda for five or six months. How are we wanting to proceed? Which ways are we wanting to go? Is there? It was really to get a focus and a strategy out of city council as to where they wanted to go for years. So, when it came time to budget, there wasn't much question about how council wanted to be because we would have discussed it throughout the year through these workshops as to what were, what were the things council was really interested in. It didn't take any guess on my part because we would have discussed it. That was the whole premise behind the workshops to be, really to, to start with. It was to facilitate open discussion about any topic that you wanted. I mean, if you remember sitting up over here, it was the OPEB. And Sharon laughs a lot when she sees, you know, the chart. They said, "We were trying to describe OPEB over multiple meetings as to what the impacts were on the city." Those are perfect things in workshops to discuss so that you get a, really a greater understanding of what it is versus a meeting, because we weren't pressing for a vote. It was just saying, "This just needs to be on your radar. You really need to understand what's going on with these things because they're, they're difficult topics to understand." The same as kind of the insurance. Let's go talk about what's going on with the insurances. So, when it comes time to vote for insurance, I'd open a roll, and you're very prepared on, on those types of issues. So, but for the meeting on the second, certainly a workshop can turn into a meeting if you want to vote to say, "Yes, let's eliminate that from the budget." The trouble is, you know, we've got to make sure after the first, there's very restrict timeframes that you have to do for advertisement after the first 501. But you, you don't get a lot of latitude for it to sit out there. It has to be finalized at the end of that meeting.
And I, and to be clear, I, I don't have, um, you know, any, any big issues with the budget. I, I'm just saying that, that I was here when we came up with the concept of workshops. I remember when we didn't have workshops. I remember when we had workshops. And I, in my opinion, it might as well just be a special council meeting. That way, if there is need for a vote, you can go ahead and get it over with. If there isn't, you don't have to vote on anything anyway. So, uh, you know, that's just my opinion is, we tried workshops. It was like the, like the drive-up window. I, I don't believe it worked. So, uh, anyway, I, I would like to have a, a meeting on the second. I don't have any, anything gnawing at me that's different, but I don't think we've discussed the budget in great detail because we've been so busy doing other things. So, I, I think that that would be a prudent thing. And I would prefer it be a special meeting as opposed to just a workshop.
One question I.
You get an opportunity on the ninth to, to vote on what you've talked about on the second.
I know, but I, like I said, if, I, I don't believe workshops are that cool. So, that's just my opinion.
I will ask you one thing then. Is there anything in particular you want us to be prepared to discuss? Because if the department heads, if there's something in particular, one of the things I want Jim to be able to do is the 408 projects. I, I pulled it out of our last year's budget discussion points. It's the layman discussion of our construction projects, what we're doing in our 408 projects. So, that those are where we spend a lot of the money in public works. It's beyond just buying a new truck or fixing the things that come up on a daily basis. It's that 408 plan that he gives us a, a real discussion or, or what that really is. Because I think that helps to understand where we're moving on a year, on the full year basis. Because that is the discretionary funding that we, we put out there for, for utilities. So, if he can be prepared to discuss that, certainly at the meeting. Those are just the kind of things that if, if there's going to be questions, we want to make sure staff is, is ready for whatever information you want. So, if you even want to get with somebody before that meeting and say, "Hey, I'm going to bring this stuff up. I want to make sure you're ready so you can have the information that you think you're going to need."
So, Mr. Callahan?
That'll be the workshop on the second?
Yes.
Or a council, or a special council meeting?
Or council meeting.
I'll make a motion for, have a, um, special meeting on September 2nd. Second.
Discussion.
September 2nd. September 2nd. Nine. Nine o'clock.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
I think Mr. Byrd was.
Councilwoman Barnaby?
I think Mr. Byrd was first.
Ms. Barnaby, please, let me run.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just trying to be polite. Um, Mr. Callahan, so if, if there is a specific issue or topic or concern that we have, do you want us to get with you? Or do you want us to have, uh, time with the department head?
Either one of your, either one of your choice.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Byrd?
Thank you. Now, I guess I can go. One of the, one of the, the things, um, I've, um, noticed about, uh, special meetings and I, I understand the, the logic that, uh, we're together and we can vote on certain things. One of the things is that a lot of times we do these special meetings and, uh, what, uh, what is like one item, all of a sudden, the agenda gets to be three, four, five items. I, at this point, it's not that I'm opposed to, uh, meeting on the second. But, uh, I think it would be more appropriate according to, uh, the comments, uh, by, um, uh, Councilman Sanders. He wants more discussion on the budget. A budget workshop, we've had it one, you know, in the past. And, um, any of those things, uh, items can be brought forward to the first 501 that we have. And, uh, that's when we can, uh, have a, a vote at that point. But, you know, I just wanted to, to, to make a statement and say, I'm not, I'm not that I'm opposed to them, but when we're looking at something that's going to be more, uh, tailored to talking about the budget, I would prefer it being a budget workshop on the second. Thank you.
There is nothing that we will bring up in, in the form of a, prior to the official approval of the budget, where we ask council to approve a budget. We've never asked you to approve a budget ahead of the first, first approval, move it for the second.
Absolutely.
So, it's always recommendations from council to change things that would be, obviously, the consensus says, "Change this, change that." Is that what we want to do as opposed to vote to change it? Because we, we always go by what council thinks they want in the budget.
One more time. Uh, I think I hear what Mr. Byrd is saying, and it, it, it's kind of like agenda creep where we set a special meeting to deal with a special topic and then we start getting other things tacked onto it. I would respectfully request with this meeting that it be just the budget.
I'll amend the motion just to be on, specific on the budget.
Unless it's a dire emergency, I would not put anything else on that special meeting, but.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to have a September 2nd special council meeting on the budget. Let's vote. Word one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five? Yes.
Special budget meeting, special meeting on the budget on September 2nd, 9:00 AM. Notice five to zero, Ms. Bush. Anything else, Mr. Sanders?
No, thank you.
Byrd?
Yes. I guess, uh, just one brief comment. Thanks to, I'd like to thank, uh, Public Works Director, for the, uh, I guess, the, the input, uh, on a lot of work that's getting ready to go on along, uh, the 15th Street East area with the sidewalks by the county and, uh, as well as the other project, uh, along, uh, that particular area. And, uh, we like to, you know, say thanks for, you know, letting us know that. And, uh, I'll try to get that out to the, the resident. So, uh, at this point, um, I have nothing else to, uh, report.
Department heads, Ms. Bush?
Yes, just wanted to briefly thank you for approving the flu shots earlier. Uh, this is one of the great benefits we give to our employees. It's a free opportunity to get a flu shot, especially in this COVID age. We're really going to be encouraging people to do that. And we work with public, so they each get a $10 gift card. So, a lot of, a lot of, uh, approval from the employees on that. So, thank you for going ahead and approving that. Um, I also just briefly want to let you know that Jeanie is preparing documentation about the referendum items that will be coming up, that we can put on our website and do distribution. Obviously, just an explanation of what is going to be on the ballot so people can see that ahead of time. No, no pro or con or anything else, just an explanation. And we'll make sure that's readily available for folks that are looking for that information before the election. That's all I had.
PD?
Hello.
Good morning. Um, Chief had to step out. She has a Florida Police Chief Association board call that she's on right now. Uh, earlier this morning, the chief, uh, contacted me, Mr. Roddy Jones was here, asking about a public records request. Um, he made a public records request to our department on July 21st. That one came in, not to our department, but to, uh, City Hall through their tracker. It was properly put on the tracker by, uh, Mr. Bill Ackles. He forwarded that email to me. As a result, I forwarded that information to Lieutenant Dennis Staley, who compiled that list that Mr. Jones was asking for, um, and got it back to me. Uh, I had some verbal communication with, uh, Lieutenant Staley, but then I, I personally neglected to send that information on to Mr. Jones. It has been sent to him along with an email, and I'd like to read a portion of that email, uh, to Mr. Jones into the record. "The updated complaint summary for Detective Ben Piper is attached. Lieutenant Dennis Staley updated this document the same day we received your request and the document was sent to me. Therefore, it was my error and mine alone in not forwarding the document to you on that date. I sincerely apologize. As you and I have an open line of communication in the past, and I realize that my mistake may tarnish that." So, I just want to make sure you all know it's purely that I, the department was not responsible. I was responsible for that. I failed Mr. Jones. I failed the chief.
But he has it now.
He has it now, yes.
Okay, it's been sent out.
It has been sent.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I always admire a man that steps up and takes ownership.
It's probably my fault. I, I'm the records management liaison officer for our department. That's a duty that Chief Raz years ago gave to me. It's something I take very seriously. Bill and I have a great line of communication. We, he helps me out on a ton of things.
Things happen.
Uh, normally, we send that directly to our records section, and I did not do that. And it sat in my inbox, basically.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, also, I saw it in Jeanie's, uh, bringing an update yesterday, but want to make sure everybody tries to get by and see our outdoor lobby, uh, Big Earth and, um, the association here locally really did a great job, phenomenal job out there. It's really.
Looks great. It's really terrific.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, you have anything? Chief? Scott, you have anything?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Carl?
Donovan?
Anybody else have anything? Have you got the order? Anybody else have anything? If I go to the order? We are adjourned till the second, I guess.